Missed anybody? There is none, are there any announcements? Any comments from the public? Next up, review and approve our agenda. Are there any additions or variations? There is none, I entertain a motion to approve or...
Uh, nobody responded, I'll ask.
Approve our agenda. So, seconds. All favoriters in the House?
Vance, who has your paper?
I have to multitask.
I don't think there's Vance.
Okay. Well, I have to pick on him anyway.
I was gonna say, that is so typical of you.
Does it have any paper?
Yet.
Crinkle away.
Just call me Chris.
Our session, we have 30 minutes to update from the EOC. EOC. Is Brian Lee with us? If not, next up, either Charlie Patten or Danielle Brown. What part, Danielle?
Okay, good morning Commissioners, thank you. So, EOC continues to be very, very busy, as you can imagine, with our increase in caseload and positive case count. We are working with the Communicable Disease Team on the Organ Health Authority's surge plan to help manage the case investigations and contacts tracing, since we do have so many cases right now. Luckily, Organ Health Authority had set out some direction around that, so that's been very helpful in redirecting and deploying some of those resources to make the most contact with as many folks as we can. I see Sarah Hartstein is on. She can fill in about any school reopening stuff if she has any updates. That continues to be a moving target as well, with the new school reopening metrics that came out a couple weeks ago, and then the Governor's newest mandate out of Friday. The big thing that we're going to begin working really actively on right now is a vaccine plan. Charlie can talk a little bit more about that. We don't have a lot of details on how, what, or when that will come out, but we need to start developing a plan for deployment, if and when we get those vaccinations, so we have something in place and are prepared when those do come out. The other thing I would like to make sure that you guys are aware of is the testing events that continue to happen, supporting the rural farms and the farm workers. Our Health Navigation team is working really actively on those testing events as they are needed. We're working on developing some structure around those, so we have a little bit more direction for the Health Navigators when they get to play out to the rural areas. Last week, Kelly Volkman and her team completed a testing event that was supposed to be, it ended up being about twice as many people as they had anticipated, so that's been a bit of a scramble trying to figure out how those are going to get rolled out with the limited manpower that we have around those testing events. So, that's something that's still very, very important and what we want to make sure we're doing, but doing in a way that is not burning staff out. So, we are working on a process and plan for that as well.
And that's all I have. Good morning, Commissioner O'Gorman.
Good morning Danielle. I have a quick question about testing. I understand from conversation among Commissioners that Lynn County is testing anyone that wants to be tested every Monday at their fairgrounds. We don't have anything analogous to that, do we?
We do not.
Well, maybe I'll wait through, Charlie, but I haven't asked this in a while. How is the turnaround time for getting test results back?
I will let Charlie answer that question.
Morning Charlie. Good morning. Any other questions for Danielle? Veneology. Okay. Since you asked, that was on my list, Commissioner, maybe I'll start with that. Our lab capacity remains good. We're averaging just over a day and a half on results turnaround right now. It varies from lab to lab, but our highest capacity lab continues to be Lamigale Toxicology, and their turnaround was excellent. And so, our average is well below the two days we want. Having said that, the lab testing volume remains high, but what is really key here is that our percent positivity is going up, and that's really an indication, you know, given fairly thick amounts of testing, that there's lots more virus in the community. That shows up in our numbers. So, if you look at the online dashboard, you will see that over the last two weeks, our average cases per day has increased more than double, almost triple, within two weeks previous. And along with that, the number of people that are monitoring, who have tested positive or are doing daily monitoring, has increased. We're doing active monitoring, well over 100 people a day at this point, so it's really a scramble. A lot of those people are doing very brief daily check-ins, but a few people do take additional support if their circumstances change in the middle of their isolation period, and the new program services or assistance are needed, so there's a lot of work involved in that. Just to sort of illustrate that, the week of October 25th, we had 22 cases. The week of November 1st, we had 46, and the week of November 8th, it went up to 64. This last weekend alone, between Friday and Monday, we had 40 cases. So, this is really, you know, that very extreme growth that everyone is seeing nationally, and it's for sure coming here. We are not quite as highly impacted as a lot of our sister counties, but we're certainly getting our share. The other thing I'll mention around testing is Oregon State University has offered trace testing to all students this week. They're encouraging them to get tested before Thanksgiving holiday and putting out some very strong messaging to them that if they travel for Thanksgiving, if they go home or wherever, then they should stay there. So, the in-person, what little courses were occurring on campus and in person here are ending next week at Thanksgiving. And so, they're messaging to students, if you stay here, stay here. Don't travel and come back. If you go home, go home. Recommended to isolate when you go home and travel, but don't come back until winter term begins. And so, they've been doing this messaging all along, they're really reinforcing that, offering that pre-Thanksgiving testing, as I said, to all students, residence hall and off-campus. Uptake of that, as I understand it, the first day was fairly slow. They are hoping that that picks up, it is voluntary, and then the week after Thanksgiving, they will be offering the same testing for all faculty and staff, all employees associated with OSU. So, we will see what comes of that. As far as our cases go, we're still, over 50% of our cases are in that B29 age group, and we are seeing, just as the rest of the state is, that the vast majority of our cases are in people's closest contact. So, really, it's transmission in the household. This brings a lot of concerns about Thanksgiving. There's lots of comments about keep it small, just a few people. Even that is worrying under these circumstances. If you have non-household members at an event, whether that is watching a Beaver football game, whether that is Thanksgiving dinner, a birthday party, that is where we're seeing a significant amount of our transmission is, unfortunately, with those people that we know and trust and are closest to. You know, it just, there still is a significant amount of asymptomatic people spreading the illness. We have not seen dramatic increases in hospitalizations here, but again, hospitalization and unfortunately death tends to follow anywhere between one to three to four weeks after case counts spike. And so, that's the real concern, that taking precautions now, when we're already two weeks or more into this spike, it won't hurt. Every precaution people can take is good, but we are likely to see some more severe cases just as a result of the spike we've seen already. Regarding scenes, as Danielle said, we have very little information now about this Pfizer vaccine, and now, you know, the second vaccine that has appeared to show beneficial effects, there's not a lot of other science out there about it, so we're not exactly sure who the highest effect is in, when they're available. All that is under review in the FDA and at federal level. We are anticipating the possibility of an emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine, potentially this week. Whenever that comes out, we will have a lot more information about who the priority groups will be, where the priority geographies will be, how the distribution will happen. But in the meantime, as Danielle said, we have convened a regional work group that was reported several weeks ago, Samaritan, the Deep Stone, a regional vaccine planning group. They do have ultra-cold freezer capability, so they have been authorized by the state as a pre-positioning location for these mRNA ultra-cold vaccines that take minus 90 storage capability. Linn, Lebaton County, all of the medical communities, Lincoln County, are all involved in this regional planning. So, you know, we are getting our heads together, doing some coordination with a little bit of information that we have. We're doing that internally in each health department as well, so that at least we've got the players identified and the communication networks set up, so when we receive more information about distribution, priority groups, vaccine volumes, those cases are in place. And then, you know, of course, there will be a huge information push about that once we know who they are for. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, there's been a lot of media around the potential hope for the first kind of vaccine being delivered and actually administered sometime in December, but please remember that this vaccine takes two doses, three weeks apart, and then potentially some time after that within the body to mount a full response. And so, at a minimum, even if there's some rollout in December and a few of the top priority, probably medical providers and intensive care, emergency room, EMS folks may be first in line, I'm just guessing on that, but even at that, they won't have full vaccine protection until sometime in January. And so, we've got a ways to go here, and the more precautions people take, the better off we'll be through the holiday season. So, any questions?
No questions, Charlie, but maybe I do have a question. What kind of advisory should we put out to the public in terms of these processes and say, you know, number one, this happens first, number two, this happens next, and so on? It seems to me that there's gonna be a lot of confusion and in some cases, panic. So, how do we handle that?
Are you asking specifically about vaccines, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm really talking about the vaccines, yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's really premature for us to put out anything until we know when vaccine might arrive and who the priority groups will be. And it is, of course, I can foresee that we will have, you know, a number of people who potentially are in higher vulnerability groups, but maybe not at the very top level. If, like I say, healthcare and emergency medical workers are first, we may have quite a few people with pre-existing conditions, underlying medical situations, who are listed sort of in second tier and want to get in. So, at the same time, we're promoting and pushing the vaccine to the top priority people, we may be having to hold off some other folks, just because the vaccine is likely to come in fairly small batches that the administration will really have to be tightly prioritized. But I think beyond that, everything would be just work right now, and I would be very reluctant to put out, not do anything except stick by what, you know, the ambiguity you're hearing in the national news is really all the information that we have. We have no additional details.
That's why I asked the question. I think, you know, but it's really important to be very succinct in our messaging once we know the vaccine is coming, and identifying the characteristics that you talked about will be important. So, there isn't a rush on the hill, so to speak.
Right, we actually have, just began a discussion of that at our Department Operations Center this morning, and we will be forming a subgroup in the DOT that will include some public information folks to begin this exact planning, and it will be really important that, again, that we coordinate whatever information we're putting out with the other counties and with Samaritan and with the state. So, just as we've tried to do through the entire event, we have message congruence, and as much as possible, people are contributing to the information.
Charlie, I have a question. You mentioned priorities. Who sets the priorities? You know, we can all kind of imagine what they should be, but who's in charge of that?
Food and Drug Administration, so they will issue the emergency use authorization, and based on the clinical trials that have been done, the Phase 3 trials, they will have the analysis of who the vaccine is effective for, and also based on the amount of vaccine that's available and where the risks are. You know, I think all the smoke signals and indications are, like you said, those frontline medical workers are likely to be first in line, but those priorities and restrictions, limitations, recommendations for prioritization will be set by the Food and Drug Administration.
Thank you. My other thought is on messaging, but it's almost, not for you folks, but for the general public, it's premature to talk about vaccines. I mean, that's so far in the future, and we've got months of needing to behave ourselves and that, and we've got our messaging folks on this meeting, but there have been so many mixed messages through this whole thing, where, oh, no, you don't really have to do masks, or this isn't real, or, and the vaccine discussion could plug right in there with, oh, well, it's pretty much over, the vaccine's coming. And, well, yeah, and maybe for you, in six months, or, you know, some period of months, and in between, we're, I don't know, losing control is accurate, but the trends are, as you were saying, are not in our favor. And winter is just beginning, the indoor season, and so, I think that's, I'm really concerned about, and not just talking about our local message, but the real message is we have months that we have to behave ourselves, and, well, I'm tired of that. Too bad. This is what we have to deal with, and it's serious.
I agree, Commissioner, and we think, you know, the vaccine is a glimmer of hope, and we haven't had many of those for several months. Now, I think, you know, it's, Alyssa and Lilia can speak to this as well, but it's a hope on the horizon, and that's really nice to have at this dark time of year, when we seem to be entering into, you know, a really tragic phase of the pandemic. But, you know, what I've tried to communicate is, please, please, please buckle down and give us six months, maybe eight months. You know, it will be summer, and we need to get through this winter. There is that glimmer of light on the horizon, and hopefully, it's not false, it looks quite promising, but we're not there yet, folks. And we just really need to hang in there and even tighten down a bit, you know, and so even that Thanksgiving dinner with your best friend next door neighbor are probably not a thing to do, you know, really rethink your other holiday plans, because, you know, it's a dark winter, but spring and summer are out there. We just have to hold out until then.
My image was peaks and valleys, and we could see the peak across the way, but we've gotta go through this valley before we get there, and it's, I'm just concerned that there's so much skepticism about this whole business, and with the vaccine talk that taking our eyes off what we actually have to do to, like I say, get to spring and summer in some kind of decent shape. Your messaging folks, Alyssa or Lilia wanna weigh in at this point?
Sure, Commissioner, yeah. I'll, you know, leave my update into kind of aligning with what Charlie has said. With the last meeting, we have really been trying to focus on a request that came through the EOC from Dr. Thompson about the messaging, and I know Commissioner Malone has spoken with Alyssa too about messaging. It really weighs on us, to be honest with you, the fatigue that people are experiencing about COVID messaging, and how do we try and package what we've been saying for seven months in a way that someone is gonna, you know, have that light bulb go off next Wednesday and say, maybe I shouldn't gather, maybe I should stay home this year. And so, how do we find that motivating factor, that compelling factor for the different, frankly, value systems of folks within our community, and then package that up in a nice little message, and then put it somewhere where they'll see it three times, and then it'll, you know, get you to remember, you know, deeper about it. So, we have a challenge for Italy, but what we have been focusing on is really the twinemic messaging, to try and take the pressure off the hospital system, locally pressure on our hospital system for COVID and flu, not even really from the COVID virus. Additionally, the new testing guidelines that have come out requiring additional tests, what we have heard in terms of JIC members, JIC TIOs talking with the Communicable Disease Teams, that folks will get the call and then they'll go out right away and go test. Well, what we need them to do is actually to wait five days before they go get that test, so that they don't have a false negative. So, we've been working on that messaging, and then we've really been brainstorming about what are some high-impact visuals that we could be considering in terms of new ways to package messages, obviously, but certainly, Commissioner Malone, I agree with you and I hear you in terms of, it is a concern. Alyssa, do you want to add to that from your perspective, over the last week of work that we've been doing in this area?
Sure. I think that as far as the JIC is concerned, we've kind of been lucky to be able to have multiple levels of messaging that we're managing at the same time. You know, we continue to hit on prevention messaging, but it's easy for people to become blind to it, and that's all they're seeing regularly. And I would say that it is at a high saturation point right now with the community, which is great, we want it to be at a high saturation point. So, when we have things like twinemic and flu shot messaging, or, you know, the messaging around waiting five days before you go and get tested, it's bringing people back into looking at our COVID materials, so that when we do post prevention messaging, they're seeing it, they're engaging with it, and it's not just something that's passing before their eyes and they're not really seeing it.
So then, you know, in addition to that, what I would just mention is that we are in, we're still in the process of demobilizing. I know that that could seem a little bit like the antithesis of some, you know, some numbers continuing to rise, but the JIC is still in the process of demobilizing, and within the last two weeks, we've had a great opportunity to test our flexibility with our staffing and our on-call folks. And so, I anticipate at this point, continuing on, what may happen in December is, so in November, November 1st, we initiated a reduced staffing schedule. The second phase of that reduction will begin December. The second phase of that reduction will begin December 1. But what might occur is delaying that second phase of reduction and staffing maybe down to December 15, something like that. It remains to be seen, we'll see how things progress throughout the rest of the month. But thus far, it's been a good, it's been a good transition in terms of the demo. But that is all that I have for you this morning unless you have further questions for me.
Commissioner Suzanne Hockman is also one of the callers on the line. So she's on if you have any questions specific for her. I just wanted to say congratulations on the hire of new Public Health Director. And Charlie, you're finally going to get to take off. And not that we are wanting to rush you out the door because we'll miss you terribly, but I think that that's wonderful news for the Health Department.
And I assume you all saw that really large smile on Charlie's face. So were you, did you conclude your report or did I interrupt that?
That's all I've got for report, Commissioner, looking forward to walking into the sunset on December 31 with Commissioner Allen York.
Oh, my mic's on, sorry.
Well, really, Charlie, really appreciate you being flexible and extending your retirement date, your, your knowledge and experience will be, be tough to replace, but there comes a time.
Hey, Charlie, you're gonna have to wait for him because my date is January 3. That's when the term ends.
Well, I'll, I'll wait.
Wait for you in the wings.
Yes. I'll wait for you in the wings. No, I, I'm sure that, that you guys will, will really like April. She's incredibly talented, she brings in a lot of experience, new ideas, new energy. Looking forward to her. Okay, next up is Kate Portia. Are you ready, Kate?
I am. Good morning, everybody. I'm a little groggy. I know Nancy's on the call. We had a late city council meeting last night. I signed up at 10:30 and they were still, they were still going. Anyway, I was gonna be real brief because I know you guys are a little bit behind. Just wanted to update you, we got a, a nodding of heads from city council on the use of the CARE Act money for businesses. So I think we're all set up. This aligns exactly with the set that you guys approved. So thank you, thank you so very much, Commissioners, for your support. And I love the alignment with the city on this and I just think we're gonna be able to do so much more with the two organizations working together. As you recall, there was some administrative funds for this, the small grants, which I want to talk about for a second, a business mailer to all the businesses in Benton County to make sure they know about our website and where they can look for resources and grants and loans, support of some shop local programs through the holidays, again, distanced or doing pickup at the herd, and support for our small business law clinic. This is up through Lewis and Clark have the program and they have multilingual lawyers available. We've been hearing from a lot of our minority businesses especially that they're having difficulties negotiating with their landlords. And we also have an item for outdoor tents. This one, we're gonna put on hold, watch how the two-week freeze goes, but I'm fearful, given the numbers that we've been hearing from our friends in public health, that, that the outdoor dining is not gonna come back by the end of the year. So if that's the case, we'll monitor that closely and roll those funds into one of the other programs. One idea is to help with some little of the pancake barricades and signage for doing curbside pickup for our businesses because again, we want to find ways that businesses can still sell their wares and food and good stuff, but do it in a safe way. So we'll, we'll monitor that closely. On the grant, I did want to let you know, it is looking like we will have a fund of about $355,000 to stand up. This again is comprised of Benton County money, of city money, and some rollover money from Benton County from previous rounds that you had said yes to. That's the one final update I wanted to give. The Business Oregon Round Three Fund, this is the one with the subtraction formula, you guys remember, we had an allocation of $85,000. And I'm telling you, our group was calling businesses, we marketed it, I mean, we hit the ground and we got exactly two applicants for a total of $5,000 that were able to qualify under the subtraction formula. So what's happened is Business Oregon has asked folks to return the money. Mary Ottley's team is working on that. And then they're gonna be doing another round of funding, which should be more aligned with the less stringent Round Four. So we're waiting to see what that will look like. And then they have an additional round, a new Round Five, for those of you keeping track at home, which will be forthcoming. So again, we're, we don't know what this will look like. They did talk about creating some geographic proportionality. We don't quite know what that means. I think it may mean some more funds heading up to the Portland area. They've got a very high population and their percentage of receipt of funds has not been as high as some of the other areas. But again, we'll watch it, we're applying for anything and everything to help folks. So working with your team, with Rebecca and others on the CDDG, so that's still in process, we will have some updates for you guys on that shortly. But that's my report for today and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, for Kate?
I, I do have just one question, Chair Malone, and that is what, this new round of freeze from the governor, I, I know it's gonna hit some of our local businesses really hard, some of them are really on edge. What do you, is there any ability to, I, I just, I don't know exactly what I'm trying to say, other than that I feel for them and know that we're gonna lose some local businesses.
I think that's possible, I think it's quite possible. I think we have a lot of businesses who have been hanging on by their fingernails and with a second dialing back, which, you know, again, having sat next to my public health friends at the EOC maybe was not a surprise to me, but is unfortunate. I, I am really worried. There's some kind of put out pleas on Facebook. I think my message would be yes, and if anybody's watching or listening to this, find ways to support your local businesses. Like when you have your alone Thanksgiving with just the folks in your household, go do a curbside pickup for your pies or get some food or get some treats to send to your family. Just do whatever you can because every little bit is gonna make the difference for these businesses surviving. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Kate, if that's you being groggy, you're, you're doing pretty good. So I know, I know groggy and I'm not sure you qualify. All right. Are there any more questions or comments about the EOC DOC discussion? Did Brian Lee join us? I know there were a couple people that checked in after we started.
Commissioners, I did want to have a brief question, ask a brief question about the financial reporting. We were doing that on the second Tuesday of the month, but with the DOC updates coming on the first and the third now with the bimonthly update, we'll likely do the financial updates on the third Tuesday of each month. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I forgot to do this at the beginning, we have a letter from Board of Health Advisory backing up the governor's discussion. Vance, do you want to join in and, and we'll add this at this point to discuss the Benton County coordination with the governor's two-week pause?
Sure. What, what, what exactly do we want to discuss?
Benton County's response, we have a well-crafted message that we just received this morning from the Board of Commissioners. And I think maybe a little discussion about, to start, the county coordination with, with the governor's efforts and timetable. The governor is doing a two-week pause and I think what I heard yesterday was the county may have an effort that, that goes to the end of the year.
Okay, so the governor's, governor's directive obviously is statewide and, and I believe it's going to be, and I think the three commissioners may have a better handle on this, but the information I'm seeing from the county councils is that it may be adjusted to be a bit more county-specific. But generally speaking, the, the directives for having businesses basically closed to the public, face masks being required, social distancing, limiting indoor get-togethers, et cetera, none of that requires Benton County to do anything formal. So if the question is, does, do the Benton County Board of Commissioners wish to extend the governor's directive to the citizens of Benton County, you don't need to do that. The governor's order already takes care of that. Now then, the, the secondary question is, do you want to impose specific directives or mandates on Benton County, the organization? In that case, you do not need to do anything specific. The county administrator has the authority to make changes, to implement safeguards and limit access to the public. It's my understanding that the acting county administrator, Matt Weatherall, excuse me, along with the executive team, is recommending that there be, that the organization follow the governor's directives and that the county close its public areas to the public and that as many folks who can do so are encouraged to work from home. That does not require a formal board motion, order, or resolution. It would, it would certainly be, I think, beneficial to the organization for you all to, if that's the direction you, you'd like to go, to acknowledge that you're supportive of that, perhaps even direct the county administrator to take those steps. But I just want to reiterate that the description of, the job description for the county administrator gives that position the authority to make those changes. And it's my understanding that those will be in effect beginning tomorrow morning. And I guess I can let Matt speak to those a little more clearly. So I think I've had, I hope I haven't just talked in circles around this, but kind of gotten to what you were asking. But before I forget, before we leave this conversation, I, I think it would be helpful to Alyssa and to Lilia to hear any feedback y'all have on that press release that was circulated this morning. I know the question was posed, would you respond to Alyssa? I think it's probably better to avoid the impression that there might have been a behind-the-scenes meeting, that you respond to her during this board meeting so that we don't run afoul of the open meeting laws.
On that issue, the press release, I think, is nice and succinct and so I, I think it's great to Alyssa.
Zan or Annabelle, any, anything to add?
I also.
Sorry.
I also read through it, made one minor grammatical suggestion and that's it. And I saw that Annabelle had her thumb up, so she's in support as well. And I just wanted to say that based on the call that we had with the governor and her staff and OHA staff yesterday, that this two-week freeze is really, has too intense. It's to try whatever way we can to minimize the Thanksgiving and holiday gatherings over the next couple of weeks and to roll out new metrics that are aligned with the school metrics statewide to allow for more county-level flexibility and county, county-appropriate response. So I think that it's a, a, a good approach. We saw some of the tentative metrics yesterday. They are far from approved. They are going to go out region by region around the state and get more input from local public health officials and the local health, public health administrators both. And so I, all I can say is that it was a good conversation and it was an opportunity for Commissioners to put some of the questions that have been frustrating to them so far. But I think we're moving in the right direction.
Is that what you needed, Alyssa?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners.
And our acting county administrator, Matt Weatherall, was nameless mentioned. Do you have anything to add to this discussion?
No, sir, I don't believe I have anything further to add.
Okay. Well, good. There's nothing further, we will move on to the item number five, the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Most carries. Next up, item six, department requests and report, 6.1, discussion and decision to adopt the 2021 revised fee schedule for the Environmental Health Department. I think Bill Emmerich is with us, take it away, Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. I hope everyone's doing well today. So before you is our request for the 2021 environmental health fees. Basically, there are four options that we've laid out. One would be option one, to approve the environmental health fee schedules for 2021. This would result in essentially about a 3% increase in license fees. Option two, approve a 50% credit for fees paid for 2020 licensing. We estimate that total to be about $150,000. That would be money that would be refunded to businesses that had, or credited back to restaurants that had restaurants, pools, spas, hotel motels, organizational camps that had acquired a license in 2020. Option three would be to do no fee increase. And option four would be to provide alternative directions to staff. And under the, under the four options, it's certainly, certainly very plausible to do a little mix and matching. For example, I think, you know, we, we need to approve fees for 2021, but if we wanted to, or if your desire to give some credit to the 2020 licenses, both option one and option two could be done together. 2 could be done together. So that's kind of the outline, I'll come back to that in just a moment. We did have, as everyone is aware, the hospitality industry, restaurants, pools, spas, hotel motels have all suffered significantly during COVID-19. Restaurants have been great players in this, as well as others, their efforts to social distancing, working with staff to make sure that food is continued to be offered safely has been very, 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 very commendable. The, for environmental health, one of the root for the request is, we've not simply, we've just simply not been able to go out and meet our inspection quotas for 2020. I think we're on track to maybe 50% of the inspections completed, and that's the root of the request from the Food Service Advisory Committee on some kind of credit to restaurants in their 2020 license. As everyone probably knows, environmental health was tasked to help staff the emergency operations center during the early stages of COVID-19. We also had to discontinue field work for a period of time while staffing the emergency operations center. We also then worked in the emergency operations center for wildfire response. And then more recently, we've been doing case contact investigations in support of communicable disease. So all of that came with a cost, and that cost was not being able to be in the field doing inspections. I guess at this point, I would entertain any kind of questions or comment. I know I believe Mary Ottley's online, so she might be available to answer any questions about how the credit would work for 2020. And of course, we've already heard from Kate and Catherine on small business loans. Part of our strategy for moving forward is, depending on what the Board of Commissioners do, we also are planning on sending out information on small business loans with our license renewals and through other communications that we can have with the affected industry as well, too. So I guess I'll stop there and see what questions or comments you might have.
I'm glad to see a better estimate of what that 50% credit would cost. And my question is where, how that would be financed? Because I lean towards that combination of Options 1 and 2 at this point, but I do want to know how it would be funded.
So I will allow Mary Ottley to take a first crack at answering that.
Commissioner, there's a couple of ways we could do it. We could use the already reimbursed fund, that we've got some CARES, both funds available. Or we could just, because this is in the general fund, the general fund could absorb that loss as well. And then there's a kind of an outside that we might be able to ask for CARES reimbursement, but it's, I think we have plenty, if we're down there, if it's facing revenue, I just don't feel comfortable asking for a direct CARES reimbursement, but it certainly could be the other fund, that we already have reimbursed.
Okay, that sounds like, yeah, using the already reimbursed CARES fund sounds like a good idea.
I agree with Zan on the combination 1 and 2. I think in the packet, there has been no fee increase for 2020, is that correct?
That is correct. In 2020, we held fees flat, so the last time we did an increase was 3% in 2019.
And just a basic concept, I like small, regular increases rather than kind of saving them up and then doing a large jump in one year. And I think it's entirely appropriate to do a credit to some of these folks who paid for the service that they did not receive this year for very good reasons, but, and so some kind of credit on their fees, I think, is entirely appropriate. So I think combining 1 and 2 makes sense. And I guess at this point, what kind, do you need further direction on that, Bill? What's the goal here?
I think probably what would be helpful is if the commissioners made a motion to adopt Option 1, and then maybe a second motion to adopt Option 2. Then we could have separate votes on that, and that would give us instructions to move forward.
Okay.
So we can't do it as one motion, just to adopt the 2021 Revised Fee Schedule for Environmental Health incorporating Options 1 and 2?
That would work for me as well, too. That's more of a Vance-Coney question, I think.
You know, one motion, as long as you identify what you are selecting, should suffice.
Okay, well, let's consider that a motion, then.
Very well said.
And I second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I just want to make sure, Erica, that motion, you got it and understand what they said?
Issuing a, in addition to the revised fee schedule, issuing a 50% credit on 2020 fees. Is that correct?
Basically, what I said, Erica, was that I moved to adopt the 2021 Revised Fee Schedule for Environmental Health incorporating Options 1 and 2. Okay, got it.
Thank you, Erica.
And then Mary and I can probably meet later today, if her schedule is free, to kind of talk to logistics about how to provide that credit. And again, thank you, commissioners. I wholeheartedly agree with Pat on keeping the fee increases relatively small. It certainly keeps the number of calls to my office down, if we can do that and not do large increases, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
And thank your team for all the work that they've done.
Oh, absolutely. It is definitely a new time, and, you know, restaurants are, and hotels, motels, pools, spas, they're all really stepping up to the challenge. And just as, I can't mention a restaurant by name, but there was one restaurant that had two COVID-19 employees, and the manager contacted me, and we talked quite a few times over the last couple of weeks about this. And his concern was, were we coming in to close them down? And I said, no, we're not going to close you down, but you need to think about, do you have the capacity to continue to operate safely? And as they were contacted by case contact investigators, and they got a better picture of what was going on in their restaurant, they made the management decision that they were going to close out of an abundance of caution, to protect both their employees and the public. And I think that was a very, very good and very, very wise move on their part.
Well, and Bill, I remember last spring, when, I think we were going from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and a lot of questions, especially in restaurants, well, how do I do this? What does this look like? And your crew was ready to help restaurants design for the situation. As I recall, you didn't get a lot of calls on that, but you were ready with that information. And that kind of flexibility, I think, really helps. We're all being challenged to keep up with current events, and your crew's done a great job on that, so make sure to pass the word along.
Absolutely will. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Next up, item 7, New Business, 7.1, Discussion and Decision to Approve Republic Services Refuse Rate Index Adjustments to Rates. Daniel Reddick is, are you ready?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on. Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, everyone on the call. Thanks for having us. I know Julie Jackson with Republic is also on the call, and I thought I'd give a kind of a brief introduction, and she'll be able to elaborate more detail. There are two different rates, as you mentioned, or two different adjustments. One is based on the Consumer Price Index, it's the Refuse Rate Index Adjustment, which is increasing by 2.9% or an average of about $1 per residential account per month. And that item does not require action by the board. The other item is a Republic Services Request to Increase or Add a Contamination Fee of $15 to the organics cart and the recycling carts. And that does require action by the board. And that is pretty much all the details for the introduction. And Julie, if you want to elaborate on any of that.
Yeah, sure, thanks, Daniel. Good morning. Commissioner Malone, we appreciate you setting us up so well for this conversation about small yearly adjustments to the rates, rather than large adjustments every two or three years. So that is exactly what our refuse rate is designed to do, and I think 2.9 is right in that range, that we anticipate it being somewhere between 1 and 3% every year. So as Daniel said, it amounts to about a dollar per household on average. The other thing that we want to talk a little bit about is just kind of what we're calling the new norm, and that is that we are seeing significantly higher levels of waste from residential customers. We're seeing lower amounts of waste coming from commercial customers, but not in the same ratio as the increased waste coming out of homes. And that's kind of our new norm. We understand that there are more people at home, the waste that they might be making at work, they are often making at home if they're working remotely, more family members in one household, college students home rather than going back to school. There are a lot of reasons, and some of the things that we are seeing are significantly more cardboard, for example. So we know people are ordering online. We think that takeout containers contribute to a lot more waste. And one of the things we're really seeing is that people often don't have room for that waste, and we're just seeing a lot of contamination in the recycling and yard debris. And this is not in any way talking about those people who wishfully put a product in the recycling. We're really talking about people who just throw a bag of trash in the recycling or the yard debris because their garbage cart is full. And that's what we're attempting to do something about. This was really brought to us by our drivers, who are reporting, as they look at the hopper camera, as the waste is being emptied, they see these bags of waste. So the system we came up with was to charge a fee, $15 for contamination. It's significant enough that I think it will stop a lot of people. And then the other piece to that is that we would send out a warning. So when the driver sees that, he would, he or she would immediately call in, using a direct connect system they use with dispatch, and note the address and the account where they saw the contamination. That one of our operation clerks would then note that account and send out a warning, postcard. And the warning postcard just has information about, your cart was contaminated today, this is what we saw. This is just a warning. If it happens again, we will charge a $15 contamination fee. So everybody gets a warning before it ever happens, before they're ever charged. But we really are trying to educate people and let them know that they can upsize their garbage cart if they need to, or we are constantly putting out information about reducing waste as well. So it's kind of tough right now, because to go containers and cardboard and all those kinds of things are sort of a way of life right now, but it won't last forever, and we know that as well.
And Zan?
It's interesting to me that this is occurring now, because this is a discussion we've had over the last several years, off and on, about whether or not a contamination should be, would be feasible. So I'm assuming that this has become much more of an issue recently, and that's what has prompted it. But I'm also intrigued by the hopper cameras. And I did not realize that we had that kind of technology, because I think earlier, part of the question was that we didn't know how to determine where the contamination came from. So knowing that this came from the drivers themselves, and that they have that competence to make those decisions along the way, is interesting. And so we'll see. I'm curious to see how this plays out, but I think everyone would agree that we want to maintain the cleanliness of the, both the recycling stream and the composting stream.
Yeah, and I think having the drivers buy in really is the key. They are the ones who have to do the notifications. And again, they aren't able to see single items that are contamination, but they can see a bag as it comes in, and that's really what we're looking for, is just the blatant contamination because the other carts are full. That's what we're trying to put a stop to with this fee.
Couple things. I appreciate the first offense, you get a warning, and I think it's probably accurate, you don't want to collect this fee. You want things in the right containers, and the fee is to encourage people to do what they're supposed to, and create future education efforts. And I guess my main request is, at some point, six months down the line, to report back just how this is working. You've got a theory on how to clean things up, and I would appreciate feedback on how's this working, what's the response from your customers.
So we provided an annual report, and last year, we moved that to the spring timeline, so that would be a perfect time to include that information. We'll be sure to do that.
Great. Okay, any other questions for Julie or Daniel?
I did want to add that this has also really aligned well with some of the updates we've been making to the website and education on the county side. We've added information about contamination, and we'll be continuing to educate from our end as well.
Really, and this is a continuing problem. I'm not sure it was accurate several years back when Chinese stopped accepting our recycling because it was too contaminated, but, so hopefully this will, this effort will help. So if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the proposed $15 contamination fee to be added to the approved rate sheet for both yard debris organics and for recycling carts.
Second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Like I say, I'm looking forward... I could say I'm looking forward to seeing how this works out.
Great, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, item favorite, item number eight, other. Do we have any other business that we need to go over today? Hearing a deafening silence, I would, we can adjourn our meeting and not too far longer than scheduled, and it could turn out with as much going on in DOC that we made more than a half hour to get that report, but I guess we, especially that we're just getting twice a month reports. So there's nothing else for the good of the order. I will adjourn this meeting and see you next Tuesday, if not before. Thank you.
Thank you.